Good afternoon, everybody. Could I have your attention, please? Class, okay. Before we begin the formal part of the meeting, we have non-agenda public testimony. And the purpose of this time is for people to comment on items that are not on the agenda tonight. They are items that the Board is not considering tonight, not going to take action because they have not been placed in advance on the agenda for the public to know about it. But it's an opportunity for the public to speak out about those items. Now, when people speak, everyone has a right to speak. We do not verify the facts or information that people are presenting, nor do we normally comment on the statements that are made. We are simply having this opportunity for people to publicly express their opinions to the public and to the Board of Education. So with that said, we have a lot of people on a lot of different topics who want to address the public tonight. We have normally allow 30 minutes for public testimony. It's going to take a little bit longer than that tonight, but everyone is, listen to me very carefully, is going to have to limit your comments to one minute. If we did not limit it to one minute, we would be here all night. Okay? So we, and we will go beyond, we could limit it to 30 minutes. The Board wants to hear what you have to say, so we will go beyond the 30 minutes. But one minute is 60 seconds, and the buzzer will go off at the completion of the 60 seconds. So please, it's an exercise in thinking about what you have to say and making your most precise point. The other thing I would suggest is listen to the other people who may be speaking on the same topic, so that we're not repetitious. I know that you may have drafted statements that could take two or three or four minutes, so just look at them and edit them down. I know that's difficult, but you will have people's attention. They will hear what you have to say if you limit it to one minute. If you do not, if we did not abide by that limit, we would not be able to allow everybody who was asked to speak, to speak. And when we have one minute, there's, we can't take a lot of time for getting up and down so that everybody is able to speak. So what I'm going to do is call several people at a time, and I would ask all of the people I called to come up to the front and stand over here. And you can speak if your name has been called in whatever order. You don't have to wait until the person who was listed first to speak. Just whoever in the group of five or six that I called, please come up, and then you have your opportunity to speak for one minute. So when the buzzer goes off, you can just finish your sentence, and then please move on, so the next person will also have their opportunity to speak. Okay? So to begin with, someone already spoke up. Okay. To begin with, we will start with Frank Colson, Jose Ramos, Ingracia Omler, Citizen, Daniel Camacho, Miles Durfee, and Stephen Greenwald. Each of you have one minute.
One of the education codes provide the opportunity for the public to review the syllabi of a classroom. So I found Beth Olrich's syllabi from Miramesa High School. And after all the years that teachers have been told not to charge fees, her syllabus says there is a $20 material fee per year. And she goes on to state that this is legal, and the law is Ed Code Section 17551. So I looked it up. And the law says any classes maintained for adults may make charges necessary for the production of articles by persons in those classes. I went on to look at some other laws, which state a fee charged shall not be made for a class designated by the governing board as a class for which high school credit is granted when the class is taken by a person who does not hold a high school diploma.
Thank you.
Please follow the law.
Steve Greenwald. Ms. Martin, I have a few questions for you. Specifically, what strategies have you developed to break the cycle between poverty and the child inability to fulfill their potential? Number two, homelessness. Number three, substance abuse in the family. Number four, teenage pregnancy. Number five, hate crimes. Number six is the preschools. What will you do to improve preschooling? And lastly, I'd like to know what you're going to do about gender equality and teaching gender equality in school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person?
Any order?
Yes, any order. Go ahead.
Good evening, Board members and Superintendent. I thought it was an appropriate time tonight to talk about the beginning of school for charter schools, as this is the first charter school meeting of the year, for the school year. And I wanted to celebrate the vision that San Diego Unified has to talk about all students and how all students can succeed. I think it's wonderful that this year we have six great new charter schools that have been added. Total is now 49 schools. And I know that your vision is really what's responsible for schools like E3 and the ability to get up and see that facility and what they're doing as a landmark downtown facility is outstanding. So I wanted to mention that to you tonight, and thank you for doing that. And I look forward, as always, to continue to work with that kind of partnership and vision that you have always had. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent and Board members. My name is Daniel Camacho, and I helped open up Lincoln back in 2007. I was there until I was retaliated against by the current principal when I organized with my staff to have more site-developed criteria for the vacant principal position. I spoke to the Board about the issues that Lincoln faced back in the spring of 2012, and again regarding the former area superintendent who was removed from her position in the fall of 2012. I'm here tonight for a third time to speak to you all on behalf of many educators that are still at Lincoln. Since new leadership has been put in place by the former area superintendent in February of 2012, over 40 staff members have left, from administrators, counselors, teachers, and classified members. Superintendent Martin, I want to commend you on your leadership you took recently with the team that looked into bullying by, bullying of students by teachers. I feel we need to take that one step further. Our district should look at the leaders at Lincoln and make sure that they're inspiring staff. We should remind these leaders at Lincoln of the code of ethics that our district has in place. I can guarantee you that if a hotline were made available for anyone who has been treated poorly by these leaders, you would hear from countless victims, not just from Lincoln. I'm asking the Board to do a social audit, please, of Lincoln High School. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to call up the following persons. Molly Stewart, Lindsay Birmingham, Kimberly Warren, Michelle Sanchez, Mary Ann Silva Flores, David Irving, and Scott Mullen, and that's all.
My name is Molly Stewart, and I am a teacher at Ocean Beach Elementary. I believe in our students and the need to make them a priority. I truly hope that you, the Board, and Superintendent Martin feel the same way and show it by lowering class size. I currently have 19 transitional kindergarteners and 10 kindergartners. 29 students is way too many. They have a variety of needs, and this larger class size is greatly limiting the opportunities for small group and individual instruction. There is overcrowding, safety concerns, and mobility issues within our classrooms. Students do not have adequate amounts of learning space or personal space. There is a loss of instructional time due to the need for more time spent on transitions, classroom routines, and behavior management. This year has required longer adjustment periods for both our parents and the students as they feel concerned about overcrowding in our classrooms. Sorry. It is time for you, the Board, and the Superintendent Martin to do the right thing and restore class size to what our students deserve.
Michelle Sanchez Garfield, hi. I'm here to speak on the behalf of, on the importance of class size. After the patches of two tax measures, Prop 30 and Prop Z, to further fund our schools, our school district has increased the class size for our students. This is not what the public wanted. You know this because many of you walked with us for Prop 30 and Prop Z to ensure that we have funding for our schools and to maintain and keep our class sizes small. As a continuation teacher at the high school level, I see the importance of class size and so do the kids. If we want to do what's best for our students, we must keep class size low. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank you, everybody, for following the time limits. You're doing a good job. Your time hasn't started yet.
I'm Kimberly Warren. I'm here today because I'm an excess teacher. I was reassigned in August, and I found out I'm being assigned again, reassigned. I've set up a classroom. I have students that I know, that I love. I've already started guided reading. I've already started my ELD. And now their instruction is going to be disrupted because I have to deploy them to other rooms again and leave the school, pack up again. Why? Because it was a short-term decision. You've decided that you want to move to 27 to 1, yet you still have excess teachers. And post-inbid in May, when I looked at the list, there were seven elementary positions for over 200 elementary teachers who are accessed. When I looked at the July forum, there were nine. And I couldn't go because I was teaching summer school. That's what I do, I teach. Then when I came in August, there were 24 elementary school positions. If you do that first-grade math, that does not add up to over 200 teachers. You still have 50 excess teachers, and I'm being accessed again? I was placed there because you knew this was a program improvement in school. I go where I'm most needed. I do what I need to do, and I don't appreciate being sent out. Please stop and think about decisions you make. I think you need them to make them sitting in a classroom, looking at 62 brown eyes when you have 31 kindergartners in a room.
I'm Lindsay Birmingham, kindergarten teacher at EB Scripps Elementary and Vice President of SDEA. I'm here on behalf of our over 6,000 members and have a petition to present to you guys, signed by almost 2,000 educators urging you to bring the class sizes back down to the level that our students deserve. The new state budget allocates money to the district based on reduced class sizes of 24 to 1. If our district does not move towards 24 to 1, we could be jeopardizing $20 million of funding for our students and our schools. The class sizes are not only bad for our K through 3 students, but that $20 million fine that could be imposed on our district would reach out to every single student within this district. There are kindergarten classes in our district right now that have class sizes of 34 students to one teacher. That's not preparing our students for a lifetime of successful learning. Rather than providing our students with the class sizes they deserve, we have dozens of teachers like you just heard from that are sitting and waiting to find a place to be. So I urge you on behalf of the students and the teachers, the educators in San Diego Unified, to reduce the class sizes back to where our students deserve them to be.
For Board members, Superintendent Cindy Martin. I've been with the district for 19 years now. This year, I have 28 students in my second-grade Spanish version class at the Language Academy. It's crucial that our students have time to practice and speak in the target language with somebody who speaks the language well. Teachers at our school are struggling with combination grades because of the high class sizes. These are children who need and deserve a quality public education. They are not dollar signs. Children start losing their identities, and we are dehumanizing public education by bringing the class sizes up like this. So please, please move in the opposite direction. Please do not raise the class sizes.
Good evening, Board. My name is Dave Irving. I am a teacher and a parent in San Diego Unified School District. And I would like to address the policy of properly staffing schools, starting with the fourth and fifth week of school. By looking at numbers after the third week, we then have to do some assessment and then properly staff schools. Every site has an administrator that is onsite that can better tell the Board or the district how many teachers are needed at a school, and it would be more accurate than waiting for numbers three weeks into school. Hoover High School alone had 70 classes that are over 36 after three weeks, and 35 teachers impacted. And it's not a way to start school. All schools across the district are having to reshuffle kids around, get new schedules, starting whole new classes again, and teachers are having to start reteaching kids beginning in the third and fourth and fifth week of school. Please readdress this issue. Let classes or schools be staffed from the beginning. Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent Martin and Board members. My name is Mary Ann Silva Flores. I'm a mother of two and a kindergarten teacher at Ocean Beach Elementary. I've been a dedicated teacher for 19 years. I have the following concerns related to an increase in class size. There is a much higher percentage of special needs and social-emotional needs this year, less time to work one-on-one and in small groups, highly likely that we are not going to meet the higher standards that we have met in the past. We have a waste of instructional time by longer times getting from one place to another, more time to manage a larger group, stopping the problem-solved behavioral issues, and more restroom interruptions. Everything takes longer now. Most teachers will not say this and fear that they will not be heard or ignored, or it is not important enough. But I'm going to say it because our teachers give 110% to raise to the demands, and the demands have increased significantly with the class size going up. I have a great fear of teacher burnout and stress-related illness for my fellow teachers and for me. I ask you that I am committed to these students, and I ask you that you should too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll call up the following people. Sandy Hanby, Trina Good, Griselda Palma, Debbie Harmon.
Hi, good evening. My name is Trina Good, and I'm a second-grade teacher and parent of a first-grader at Chavez Elementary School. I stand before you to speak on behalf of an amazing staff and fabulous children and to help you understand the impact your decisions are having in our classrooms. This past year, we raised our math test scores by 17 points. We are poised and ready to see the same success in our literacy test scores as well. However, can, how can this be done if we suffer more cuts to our teaching staff? We lost five positions from last year. We are now being told we have to cut two more. That's a quarter of our staff in one year. Your decision to cut more teachers seriously jeopardizes and hinders our forward progress. We are forced to larger class sizes and also combination classes where the teachers left have to take on two new sets of standards. You already know it's nearly impossible for students in combo classes to receive the full intent of their grade-level standards when a teacher has to divide his or her time between the two grades. We ask that you reconsider direct cuts to our classrooms. It hurts all of us, the teachers, the students, the parents, and the district as a whole. If the neighborhood schools are the heart of our district, then please do not cripple us by cutting more of our teachers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. The following people, please come forward. Kurt Meter, Lilia Alvarez, Suzanne Landry, Annette Botler, Erin Leavitt, Kristen Zur, Leslie Dubalian, and Stacy G. or C. Go ahead.
Good evening, Superintendent Martin and Board members. My name is Kurt Meter. I have, I'm here today speaking on behalf of Spreakles Elementary. We just found out that we're going to have two teachers reduced from our staff. I currently have a seventh grader at Stanley Middle that came out of the seminar program at Spreakles, and I have a fourth grader at Spreakles. Spreakles is a very unique school. We have a large choice in population, and we are English as second-language school as well. We're in fourth-year program improvement. We also, I'm also on, I'm on the PTA Board at Spreakles Elementary, and I'm also on the UC Cluster Common Core Board. So I have a unique perspective with Common Core. I see this freight train coming, as you do as well. When you couple Common Core with fourth-year program improvement at a very unique elementary school, it makes absolutely zero sense to remove two teachers. We're already compromised. We lost our vice principal this year. I implore you, please, take a second look at this very unique school that just lost a primary administrator and is risk of losing two teachers with having to incorporate combo classes in every grade and two in fourth grade. I get budgets. I understand dollars. Please, take a look at this. You have to reprioritize.
Hi, my name is Annette Bolter. I am a parent from Spreakles Elementary. I'm also a child development, early education specialist. I teach at preschool. I'm here to talk about Spreakles Elementary and the TK position of, or the TK teacher that we will be losing if the teacher is cut from our school. Currently, our TK enrollment is 46 students. We have an open enrollment school, which also provides from all of the UC Cluster areas, Doyle, Curie, and also La Jolla as well. So we have lots of open children coming in from all over the world, from the, excuse me. We have lots of different students from all over the world, from UCSD, that come to our school as using it as a TK program. We have 17 students that are English language learners that don't speak adequate English for our school. We have one child that's come into our school that is a C-class student, where the ratio was one teacher to two students. We have four children with medical special needs that have IEPs. We have several children that are still in diapers in the TK program, enrolled in a kindergarten ed education. Please keep our teachers.
I'm a parent and volunteer at Spreakles. I'm here to plead for your support in our effort to avoid losing any teachers at our school.
Your name, please.
Suzanne Landry.
Thank you.
Obviously, no school wants to lose teachers. However, our school is in a unique situation with a very diverse population that would stand to suffer more from the additional loss of staff than many other schools. Spreakles is a Spanish magnet with 691 total students. There are 184 English language learners, and 48% of our students are on free or reduced lunch. 39 students have IEPs, six of whom are in transitional kindergarten or kindergarten. We have the only two transitional kindergarteners in the UC or La Jolla clusters, and we're in our fourth-year program improvement. We have no classroom aides or vice principal because we are 35 students below the cutoff. The teachers are already doing extra bus-duty test coordination among any other, many other tasks. I volunteer in the classroom and see firsthand the degree to which these teachers are stretched to the limit. Increasing these shared responsibilities even more will have a direct effect, not only on student learning, but student safety as well.
Good evening, President Evans, Superintendent Martin, and members of the Board. I am a parent of two children at Spreakles Elementary, which is consistently an underachieving school. My daughter's second-grade classroom has 28 students, and the ratios are even higher, as we have heard at the lower levels. And now I hear you may be taking teachers away at Spreakles. This, as again we've heard, would take away, with this would force the creation of combination grade classes at every level. Combo classes negatively affect students' performance, as documented in a 2009 RAN study, which I have provided for your consideration. Combination classes are not a fix. They are just another problem. I ask that you remember that we, as a community, voted to increase our taxes so that our children would have smaller class sizes. I urge you not to take teachers away, but to increase current staffing levels for teachers at Spreakles. Please give our children the best chance for success.
My name's Erin Leavitt, and I'm a second-grade teacher at Spreakles. Leslie's daughter is in my class. And I currently have 28 students and several with special needs. And we all know that these numbers are not acceptable, and they are not what's best for students. I can't say it any better than my colleagues have said it tonight. We know that these, we cannot do our best teaching. We cannot teach these higher standards, the Common Core standards, to this many children with different needs. We can't differentiate to that extent. And when you put us in combo classes, which will be the case at Spreakles, we can't learn two new sets of Common Core standards and differentiate two grades in one classroom. This is just too much to ask of teachers. And if we look at the teachers that are at Spreakles, the two we will be losing have been moved around different grades every year, different classrooms. They've been just uprooted and moved every year, and it's not fair to them. And if we did lose them, it would be in TK on a second-grade position. Upper-grade teachers would have to be moved down to fill the positions, combos across the board. If you look at our situation at our school, it is not acceptable. And my friend Lalea is here to say some words to you as well.
Hi, my name is Lalea Cruz Alvarez. I'm, I'm nine years old, and I'm representing the kid at Spreakles Elementary. For, and the reason why I'm speaking is I want to speak up, and I want to tell you that I don't think this is right, and that all the kids in my class and all the kids at Spreakles need attention, and everyone needs to get their learning span, and everyone, like the teachers, they give an impact on us, and they fill our heart, and they just help us with everything through life, and they just do everything right for us. And then combo classes, why are you going to have combo classes when they're already, like, in misery and they're already having overwhelmed, and they're already like, ah! And they don't know what to do, because they're still, and then even more, they're going to be, like, way overwhelmed, and they have to, like, you might be mixed up with fourth grade or fifth grade or second grade and first grade, or like, we won't be able to do field trips anymore. Every year, every kid yearns for a field trip to go somewhere with their teachers, and they won't be able to do that because one step is for one thing. And why teachers are important, I think that they just help us with an impact.
I'm a parent at Jones Elementary in Sarah Mesa, and I have
Your name, please.
Stacy Kremrein.
Okay.
And I have a first grader, and her first-grade teacher is about to get cut. She has 26 kids in her class. We have two other first-grade classrooms at Jones, both between 26 and 28 kids. And then we have a combo class, kindergarten first grade. I'm not sure where those kids are going to go. All of our classroom sizes are already high enough. I urge you to keep this teacher on. Today, I helped her hang the "All About Me" posters in the class, where all the kids are getting comfortable. It's full of love. It's full of excitement and joy of being in first grade. If she, if this teacher leaves, it's going to change the whole dynamic of the school and the classroom, and I really urge you to keep her on.
As I said, we don't normally comment on non-agenda items. I just do want to say that I do appreciate everybody has turned out to talk about so emotionally and importantly about what is going on at your schools. And rest assured that the Board and the Superintendent are listening to this very closely. I know all of us experience the frustration of having passed Proposition 30 and still not having enough money for our schools. Last year, we had $120 million deficit. This year, Proposition 30 has given us another $30 million. So this year, we had only a $90 million deficit. We decided to meet that in large part by selling properties that we would not have to lay off more teachers. We were looking last spring at potentially having to lay off about one out of five teachers. That was way too drastic. We did not do that. We decided to sell property. However, at the same time, we were in a situation where the state only gave us enough money to hire a certain number of teachers, which was about 300 short of what we needed for our district. So there is a process. The Superintendent and her staff look at each case very specifically, look at the specific needs of a school. They can't meet every need because of the limited amount of funds, but it is done very judiciously and very carefully. And I just want to thank you for showing up and talking today. We have some more persons speaking on other items. Myra Rodriguez, Drusilla Willis, Susan Rodriguez, Dani Bloss, and Barbara Adams. Okay, I think I called up five people. I think we have a lot of twins here. I'll read the other names on this list of the ones who are actually going to speak. Minnie McHugh, Malek Bacon, Eva DeLucas, Cheryl Peach, Francine Maxwell, and Eric Agüeran. Those are the ones who have signed up to speak. I realize there are a lot more people there standing behind you. So please allow the people going to speak to come to the front so they can each get there. Okay, we, I'm sorry, we cannot block the exit, so if you, some of you need to either go back to your seats or move over to the other side of the auditorium. We cannot block that exit there for fire reasons. So if I could get the people who are over here by this door to move over here in front, we can have two deep right up here. We'll still be able to see everybody here. we can have two deep right up here, we'll still be able to see everybody here. What is your name?
Erica Garin.
Okay, that's fine. It doesn't, go ahead and speak. Let Erica, let Erica speak first, because all of you speak on the same topic, and then I'll go to you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Although I'm sure they'll probably agree with what I have to say.
Okay.
My name's Erica Garin. I teach English at Hoover High School, and I'm here to speak to you about similar to what Dave Irving said about the fact that three, four weeks into the school, we're having a violation of our contract where we're past the 36 to 1 ratio, and that is accordingly because of the under, under projection of our enrollment at Hoover. So just to give you a picture of what that looks like, my sixth period class had 47 students in it for three weeks. Forty-seven freshmen, sixth period, most of them boys. Just picture that for a second. Can you smell it? Yeah. But more seriously, there is bullying that's happening that I can't keep my eye on. There's kids that are dishing because they just feel like a number. There's, they're not, their voice is not heard, they're not creating relationships because there's 47 of them. And that wasn't just one or two days, that was for the first three weeks of school. And all my other classes were above 36 as well, and I just want you to reconsider how you project for enrollment for our high schools. Thank you.
Okay. I read, I read 11 names, there are actually 13. The two others are Nicole, I can't read this beachly perhaps, and Sovee Knowles. Okay, so those 13 people can speak one after the other. Go ahead.
My name's Maude Rodriguez, recent graduate of Lincoln High and our undergrad at UCSD. Lincoln used to be home away from home. This all changed in 2012 when the new administration came into Lincoln. They began taking away the centers that were meant to reflect on students' career and aspirations and interests. Then there were the classes where important students, social justice, and now fire pro. The administration, who has no experience teaching high school, has completely ignored students' requests to bring back these courses and has not taken into consideration the importance of students' well-being on campus and has sabotaged their success in high school, but not providing teachers that are qualified to teach the curriculum. Classes such as A3G requirement courses like biology, chemistry, and Spanish have been taught by four subs since the beginning of the, at the beginning of the year. They have not yet been filled with qualified teachers to teach the material. Classes are overcrowded, where some students don't even have places to sit. Teachers are well experienced and qualified to teach biology, chemistry, and environmental science, AP Psych, are on campus with no classrooms to teach because the administration has not allowed them to have a classroom. This is more than financial problems, more than budget cuts. The administration has no desire in helping the educational challenges happening at Lincoln. They're too busy attacking teachers, which only concerns all the students. Lincoln students deserve more than overcrowded classrooms, substitute teachers that change every week in their core classes. They deserve to have places to sit while they learn. They deserve to have band, dance, choir, and orchestra. They deserve to have enough textbooks for each student without having to barf from other high schools. It is time that you change the circumstance at Lincoln High. Budget cuts is no longer an excuse, this is unethical.
Okay, thank you.
It is your duty to provide for the students to work with and for them. It is time to bring necessary change to Lincoln. You fail the class 2012, the class 2013 don't fail the next generation.
Thank you.
Don't forget, you exist because the students exist. So do your job and do it right. I'll help you. It starts with administration.
Good evening, Board and Superintendent Martin. My name is Dani Blos, a teacher at Lincoln High School. I'm in my sixth year, and I've spent all six years at Lincoln. Lincoln students have experienced an alarming dismantlement of quality academic programs. Themes small schools, arts, science, and engineering, social justice, and public safety, with learnings connected to the scope of the theme, are gone. Classes like Introduction to Social Justice that have empowered students to think critically about human rights and to recognize the dignity of every human being have disappeared. Lincoln's proud music tradition is a shell of what it once was because subs teach music. This summer, I had a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to accompany Scripps Institution of Oceanography to the North Pole region. I was part of a team that looked at past climate by collecting sediment samples from the ocean floor. Sadly, Lincoln students will never receive the learnings from this adventure because marine science is now gone too. The sadness for students doesn't end with elimination of quality programs. The fact these programs were snatched without any input from students, parents, or teachers makes a sad situation even worse. In Diane Ravitch's new book, Reign of Arrows, she wrote, "Only by eliminating opportunity gaps can we eliminate achievement gaps." Poor immigrant children need the same sorts of schools that wealthy children have, only more so. Those who start with the fewest advantages need even smaller classes, even more art, science, music to engage them, to spark their creativity, and to fulfill their potential.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. As I said, I really appreciate it's very difficult to get everything in in 60 seconds. When the buzzer goes off, please complete your sentence. I know some people are very creative about how long that sentence is.
Good evening, Board and Ms. Martins. My name is Barbara Adams, and since September of 2013, I have been teaching at Moore's High School. But I was a teacher at Lincoln High School since it reopened in 2007. The last four years, I spent as the department chair of technology and the lead teacher for CCTE. Five labs onsite at Lincoln have been teaching technology ever since it opened. Since after Ms. Omegbehin assumed the position of principal at Lincoln High School, the focus of technology changed drastically. Under the leadership, computer labs have been declared unnecessary and are now sitting empty and unused. When asked about why these classes are revoked, Ms. Omegbehin's comment was, "Students need to learn how to read and write and do math over learning technology." How is Lincoln preparing their students for the future? What has Lincoln lost due to not incorporating this very important part in today's technology education? Two years ago, oh shoot.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I am Eva DeLucas. I'm currently a student attending at Lincoln High School, and ever since my school year has begun, there has been drastic changes, and that we're not even giving notification of the changes. Classes are now larger, and there's many substitutes who are not only teaching electives, but they are also teaching core classes. Currently, I'm in a piano class, and I am not receiving the education I signed up for for this semester. It has become a struggle for me to receive my proper education. We have many excess teachers at my school, and yet we are in need of many teachers. When are we going to get those teachers needed? Lincoln High School deserves better, and all our district schools deserve better than what they are now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent Martin. I'm Sovee Knowles, First Vice President of OTBS. Good evening, Board. I'm just here because I have heard, I guess, a rumor maybe concerning our mail room. I'm hearing that either it's a rumor, or it could be something that's being investigated as to removing them from the Education Center, placing them over at IMC. This has been done before, like I say, this could be a rumor, but this has been done in the past, and it just caused havoc here at the Ed Center with timely documents that need to be mailed out. I remember having, or seeing staff in the, in the hallways waiting for the drivers to come in, to stop the driver, and let them wait until the document that was needed to be mailed out that very afternoon was completed. It just caused a lot of problems. And so mail clerks were also driving their own personal cars to and from the Ed Center to IMC, and I just guess I have a solution. Instead of doing that, maybe we can put our assistant superintendents and their support staff in the communities where they can actually work out some of these issues at our schools, and the community welcomed them. They liked having that interaction. It was a positive for the district, and I think it's something that maybe needed to be considered. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Malik Bacon, and I'm a teacher at Lincoln High School. This is actually my 20th year as a certified teacher, though I've only been with the district for five years. But I have to say that I believe honestly that I have been labeled unassigned, which means that I have no classes, no students assigned to me in retaliation for an action that's permitted by our contract to let people know about extended day units that they were not being paid for. Upon return to the school, I found out my AP Psychology class, which I had grown from one section to two, has been given to somebody else who is, as a matter of fact, not certified to teach AP Psychology. Now, I find that incredibly interesting, especially since our role is supposed to prepare students with the best possible teacher, best possible teachers for those classes. There is a pattern of bullying with our leadership at Lincoln High School. And just to kind of give a nod to Mr. Camacho, fellow colleagues, if you have been bullied in some way by our administration, could you please raise your hand? Also, I just want to respond quickly to the public comments that came last week, which said that we, as teachers, weren't doing anything. I would love to show you the work I've been doing in my time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board members. Superintendent Martin, my name is Dr. Cheryl Peach. I work at Scripps Institution of Oceanography at University of California, San Diego. I'm, I'm going to steal a line from our little friend there. Teachers are important. I'm here to speak on behalf of a very valued colleague, Dani Blos. He's currently unassigned. I've worked with Dani for the last four years in a program that brings enthusiastic young graduate students into the classrooms at Lincoln and other schools throughout San Diego unified. Dani has been an exemplary member of this program. We chose him specifically because he's such a great mentor to those graduate students in terms of pedagogy and communication skills. I have two of the graduate students here supporting Dani. Dani is an incredible teacher who cares deeply about his students, that's clear. He's also someone who's become integrated into the Scripps Science Community. As he said, he just came back from a cruise to the Arctic. He's also done fieldwork on volcanoes in Hawaii. He's directed two students from Lincoln to actually go out to sea in a program at Scripps, and I think it's an incredible loss to have someone like that no longer teaching marine science at some place likely.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nicole Bradley, and I am a parent at Lincoln High School. I have a child there, we just put in there. Twenty years ago, when anybody talked about Lincoln, you didn't want your child to go there because it was a substandard school. When we got back into the community, we were told that Lincoln's on board, and they know what they're doing, they're up and running. We got our child there, and we found that that was a lie. The first two days of her being there, she stood in line. She was scared to go out and even eat lunch because she wasn't in the system, even though we were the sixth person in line on the day to sign up. Then I find out there are substitute teachers and not hardly permanent. I asked the principal what was going on, and she says, "It's not her problem, it's the district that's saying that. They're waiting for the numbers to come in." I need to find out if I need to move my child out of Lincoln, which I don't want to do, or is someone going to do something for Lincoln, get the teachers in there, get the supplies that they need, and do something for the students so that they're not confused, the parents are confused, and the teachers are confused. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. I think that concludes all of the speakers. Okay. Thank you. Is there, is there one more? Francine Maxwell, okay. You don't have the right color shirt on. Bad company.
Are they leaving? Are you going to be able to hear me?
You can just wait a second. Okay, if everybody could be very quiet, we'll listen to the next speaker. Go ahead, Ms. Maxwell.
Francine Maxwell, active parent in the community. I have just handed you the proficiency report, and some of the names that I've highlighted for you spoke to you tonight. So I want us to be very courageous in the next steps that we make towards Lincoln. I want to make sure that if there's a town hall that needs to be called, that we do the marketing that's corrected. I want you to be courageous in not allowing a teacher to get a limited assignment credential at Lincoln like they're trying to do now. I want us to be courageous when it comes to embracing underperforming teachers. I want you to be courageous in the four times that you've sent cultural competency teaching. There'll be some things coming to this board in the next couple of days via the Urban League, Mr. Ray King, I have scheduled a meeting with him, and there are some activities happening on that campus that will not be allowed. The hostile environment that the administrative team is being subjected to, I don't care that nobody likes nobody.
Everybody, please listen politely.
Everybody should respect everybody. There is due respect from everybody that has a title, whether you're a student, a community member, a parent, a grandparent. Respect is the key. Thank you.
Okay. That concludes our public comment. Thank you, everybody, for coming and expressing your views, and the superintendent and the board have listened to what you have to say and will be taken into consideration. Okay, at this point, we are going to begin the formal part of our meeting, so please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody, please be quiet, we're going to be in the Pledge of Allegiance. After that, we will have a student performance. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, if you guys want to stay, we're going to have a student performance real quick, then you can take off after the students perform. That would be really cool.
Okay, at this point, we are going to move forward with our agenda. Welcome, everybody, to this special meeting of the Board of Education, the regular meeting of the Board of Education for October 1st, 2013. If you want to speak on the agenda items that are for here today, please fill out a form over here and turn it in to Ms. Ward. We're going to, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda.
Okay, please vote on the agenda. Moved and seconded by Ms. Foster. Okay, that passes 4-0. Okay, we now have a charter school presentation from the Keeler Leadership Academy drummers. Who can introduce this group?
Good evening. I'm Tertsia Sartain. I'm the academic director of KLA Secondary. We are a charter school that serves the families of the Encanto community. As a leadership academy, we encourage our students to become real-world learners who take ownership of their learning by identifying their own unique talents. So at this time, I brought with me some of our own KLA leaders who have identified their own musical talents under the direction of Jeremy Ikem, our music director.
Hi, I'm Jeremy Ikem, and I have with us two groups in a way. We have our sixth graders, which is Oseis, and Michelle, and Sergio, and then on base we have Ryan, he's in eighth grade, but Witsy couldn't make it. And then we have our drummers, seventh grade, Dallin, and Alejandra, and Alan, and then Ryan, and Janet. Are you guys ready? Oscar? They're going to do it, not me.
We have our sixth graders, which is Oseas, and Michelle, and Sergio, and then on bass we have Ryan. He's in eighth grade, but Witsy couldn't make it. And then we have our drummers, seventh grade, Dallin, and... Alondra Vasquez, she's new. Alejandra, and Alan, and then Ryan, and Janet. Are you guys ready? Oscar? They're going to do it, not me.
Oh, when the saints go marching in. Oh, when the saints go marching in. Oh, I want to be in that number. When the saints go marching in. And when the sun begins to shine. And when the sun begins to shine. Oh, I want to be in that number. When the saints go marching in.
That concludes our performance.
All right. Thank you very much for that great performance, including a person who can play the clarinet and sing both. It's pretty impressive. I wanted to sing along with her, but I decided not to ruin it. Okay. We currently have two members in the Board of Education. We'll just delay for a moment here.
Sorry, I was in the audience having flashbacks to when I was a drummer in school.
The percussion group. In the back of the band, doing something in the back. Yes. Okay. We'll just... I'd like to ask... I'd like... Yes, but I would like to have all Board members here to... So if the sergeant-at-arms would escort the... Oh, he'll be here in just a minute, okay? We'll take a two-minute break. Ms. Foster will sing for us. Okay, we'll just wait a couple of minutes. Okay. We have all of the Board members who are present today. We have four out of our five Board members who are present for the meeting. Scott Burnett was not able to make it. We had our presentation from the Keeler Leadership Academy drummers, and now we are to consider the new charter petition to establish as charter school by Thrive Public School. Ms. Mark... Excuse me, Ms. Mark... Ms. Park, could you please present us the information?
Good evening. We did learn this afternoon that the petitioners for the Thrive Charter petition have withdrawn. Since the agenda item is present and it included a staff recommendation to deny, the Board would just have an option to accept the withdrawal on the record for the minutes.
I move that we accept the withdrawal from Thrive Charter School.
I'd like a... There's a motion, is there? Just before that, a clarification on denial versus withdrawal.
Sure.
From a legal point, and I know our legal counsel is not here at this moment, but if you could explain the difference between the two.
The petitioners, once they submit, we start our formal process of convening a public hearing, which we did in September, and then this was the action item that was brought for Board consideration, and we went through our process, including a Board item... Board report, and staff has the responsibility of making a recommendation. And at this point in time, the recommendation was to deny, and so the Board also has the option to move forward, decline to accept the withdrawal, and actually take a vote to accept the staff's recommendation to deny. That's an option. When the petitioners do request to withdraw, one question is whether they can come back to the district or any other entity. That does remain to be an option to them, except now that we have gone through the process, we would look at the petitioner's past history of success, application to our district and other districts. That would be something to consider for future submissions.
So just to understand the process, if they withdraw, they could subsequently reapply?
They could.
And we would go through the same process of having a first hearing and a second hearing, and we would do all of this over again, basically?
We would. And so in some cases, the Board would go forward with accepting the staff's recommendation and actually take action on the denial so that that is on record. That is an option available to the Board.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the withdrawal. That hasn't been seconded. Is there... You second that motion? Is there any discussion on the part of the Board?
The only question is, so when did they withdraw?
This afternoon.
Okay.
This afternoon, and as I understand, the information about the staff recommendation to deny just came within the last 24 hours.
Yes. As noted in our Board agenda item details, the staff did receive some information after initially recommending a conditional approval. Based on that information, the staff revised its recommendation for denial and submitted that and contacted the petitioner, and the petitioner decided at that time to withdraw.
Okay. So we have a motion to accept the withdrawal of their petition for a charter school. It's been moved and seconded. If there's no further comment, please vote on the motion to accept the withdrawal. And while we can't see the vote, I'm assuming... Well, I won't assume. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Yes, okay. I was... Thank you. Thank you. Wow. Okay. The other item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider the petition to establish Kiran Egan Legacy Charter School. And again, this is the first reading, the public hearing. Ms. Park?
So this is a public hearing. No action is required. The staff will review the petition, circulate it, and come back to the Board at a later date with a recommendation to approve or deny. And I can... I'm happy to go through an overview of the petition. My understanding is the petitioner is present and will likely want to do that as well, so I don't want to speak for the petitioner.
Okay. Well, at this point, we will have the petitioners... Actually, I have speakers from the other one that were withdrawn. I don't have any requests to speak by the petitioners, but if the petitioners are here, feel for... Excuse me, for Kiran Egan Legacy Charter School?
Yes, sir.
If you want to address this and give us an overview of your... So we'll understand. This is the first reading.
Good evening. My name is Bob Dunton. I'm the lead petitioner for Kiran Egan Legacy Charter School. I'm feeling a little bit like a character from Canterbury Tales. Made a very long pilgrimage this morning, got an airplane from Portland. We are not a local group. We're not a corporation. We have established a corporation, and we have a local Board. We've gone that far. But essentially, Kiran Egan Legacy is the result of a collaboration between myself and my wife and Kiran Egan, who is a research chair of education, a Canada research chair of education at Simon Fraser University, and has been publishing his theory of imaginative education for about 35 years now. His theorizing has received a lot of notice around the world, a lot of notice internationally. His books have been translated into 30 languages. There are conferences that go on, and it hasn't found much of a purchase in the United States' education arena. If I can have some sense of how much time it's appropriate for me to take, I am so happy to customize my remarks. We can do this for hours or less than that.
Please limit it to five minutes.
Great, thank you.
So we've got about four more minutes.
I appreciate it. We have been mining a different side of the mountain than have most of the people working in public education for the last several years. I've been a public school superintendent for 14 years. I've been a teacher and principal. Today, I'm the director of Corbett Charter School, which is founded in the same principles that Kiran Egan Legacy will be based upon. Corbett Charter School is a four-year-old program. It has been ranked among the top five high schools in the nation for three of the last three years during which it was eligible by The Washington Post. Prior to that, I was a superintendent at Corbett School District, which in a period of a decade moved from one of the lowest-performing high schools in Multnomah County to number eight on the Newsweek list in the nation. So we've done some interesting things in our careers, and we're public school people, public school veterans, which makes it somewhat unique in the charter world. I couldn't help tapping into the conversation that happened here a little bit, just to give you some sense of the way that we approach life rather differently. I heard about blended classrooms. We do everything that we do K through eight multi-age. We don't call it blended. And we train our teachers to teach in multi-age classrooms. We're large enough at 480 students to have standalone grade-level classrooms if we want to. But the research out there says the following, that if your teachers are trained to do multi-age, not only is student achievement essentially a wash, and that doesn't sound like, yippee, let's all go out and do multi-age, but every soft result of education comes back positive from that multi-age experience. And what do I mean by that? I mean, teacher satisfaction is higher, student satisfaction is higher, parent satisfaction is higher, attendance goes up. Those communities that are created across ages create a very powerful dynamic for schooling. And that's just one of the respects in which we tend to come at things from a slightly different angle and from a long history of significant success. If I had to give you the 60-second capsule of imaginative education, it would be to say this: We have an entire education system in the United States that is grounded in organizing and presenting curriculum in a way that's consistent with the logic of each of the disciplines. We reverse-engineer education. We start with what we want our 18-year-olds to know and be able to do, in that famous phrase, and then we reverse-engineering and say, "What does a five-year-old have to be able to do by September in order to predict that that's going to be a person who's going to accomplish those goals as an 18-year-old?" Imaginative education says this instead. Imaginative education says that it is emotional engagement that powers learning and not the logic of the curriculum. And so we organize all of our curriculum and we organize all of our lessons around those predictable patterns that at different ages elicit emotional engagement on the part of students. We do a tremendous lot of oral language development. We do a tremendous lot of storytelling. I feel like I'm running out of time, but I don't see a clock, so let me say this...
Just about 30 seconds more.
Super. Our four, five, six classrooms, we do three grade levels blended, and we do it intentionally. And we have three classrooms... We have four classrooms like that, so we literally could do grade level if we chose to. We teach in great, long tales of heroism. We teach about the people who created, generated, the knowledge that's going to be covered in the standards. We teach the standards. We are remarkably successful with regard to how student achievement is measured in public schools. And I guess I just wanted to use this time to drop the notion in there that if our petition looks slightly to the side of what everyone else is doing, that's not an accident. We really do practice slightly to the side of what most people are doing. And we have a long history of success in mainstream public schools, and over the last four years, a tremendous record of success in a K-12 program of 480 students. I would love to answer questions if you have any of those. I appreciate your time.
Okay. Any questions from Board members? Mr. Beiser?
Yeah. So how many charter schools do you have?
We have one.
And where is that located?
That's located in Corbett, Oregon. We're 22 miles east of Portland, Oregon. We created the charter school...
Right. So why open up charter schools in San Diego? Why not open up more up in the Portland area?
We're actually looking at both of those things. San Diego is interesting to us for two reasons. One is to achieve what we've achieved in a rural area isn't giving us the platform for talking about, for promoting imaginative education in urban areas. The first response always is...
Right. But why not open up a charter in the Portland School District where it's more urban? And do you have the diversity challenges of EL students and all those kinds of things?
We do, and we're looking at that also. My wife grew up in San Diego. It's a place that is important to us. It's a place where we spend a lot of time...
Have you guys relocated down here?
We haven't relocated, no.
Okay. All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Barr.
Yeah, I guess. You're familiar with the petition process and the guidelines that you're going to need to submit to staff, so when staff comes forward with their recommendation to us, is this the first time, I take it, that you would have applied for a charter petition in California?
It is.
Okay. Okay. So a number of things that staff is going to look at when they, you know, come and make a recommendation to us, everything from your academic program to your financial plan, to your operational plan... your operational plan. And among other things, that your governance structure, who's going to run the school, what's the democratic accountability of that board that would run the school? So these are all issues that I think the board is certainly going to be interested in and is going to, that we're going to, you know, ask staff about when the petition recommendation comes forward. Have you thought about the location within San Diego Unified? Do you have a site in mind?
We are working with Insight, the real estate group that works with a lot of charter schools. We're trying to locate downtown. We have a couple of locations that we've scouted and haven't really made any move on around Sixth and Eighth Street. So we're looking for a neighborhood that will establish the viability of the program, regardless of what most people would call some significant demographic challenges.
Okay. And have you identified a local group of people that will form the board? Do you have a local leader of the school?
We have four local board members. Three of them are with me tonight.
Yeah.
We're early in that process. We would intend to spend significant time in person down here getting a school going, certainly over the course of the first year. We're looking, working with charter school management group. We're planning on having them do our back office. So we've looked at a lot of those nuts and bolts, and I'm hopeful that our petition will answer those questions adequately.
Okay, thank you. All right, full disclosure, I'm from Portland, Oregon, born and raised.
I won't disclose anything. Okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
I appreciate your time.
Okay, if we don't have other public comment, that concludes the public hearing for this part of the meeting. And now we're going to move on to item E1, which is the Ten Agreement with San Diego School Police Officers Association. This is just the first reading. Board members already have received in their packets this information, so that is available to the public. And we will act on it at a future point in time. And if there are no comments from the public or from board members, we will move on from that. And that concludes the items on the agenda. We have no further non-agenda public testimony. So at this point, we will adjourn to closed session upstairs with the board members and the superintendent. Thank you very much.